Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. It's one o'clock. And this is Monday, April the thirteenth. The meeting of the Councilship of Edwardsburg Cardinal Administration and Finance Committee, meeting of the whole for the month of May, of May the thirteenth.
May the eleventh.
No, today's May the eleventh. I'd better look at my agenda. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Counselor Cameron, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Dillabaw, second. Discussion, if any? Hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried. And moving then to the third item on the agenda, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this afternoon? Am I mean?
Nope.
Minutes will show there were no disclosures. And going then to item number four, which is business arising from the previous committee meeting minutes? Those minutes were circulated in the package. Anyone have any business arising from those minutes? Hearing none. We'll move on. And so I'm at item number five, which is delegations and presentations. We have none scheduled. So that gets us right into six. And the first item on item number six is the 2020 community grants and donations. And I want to thank Rebecca for putting the briefing note together, very comprehensive. And you have in front of you the list, first of all, the descriptive of all of the summary of the grant requests, and then the list of the amounts that are requested for 2020. So I'm turning my attention to page thirteen of ninety-six in the package. And on page thirteen of ninety-six, we see the 2020 community grants and donations request. We're not gonna deal with the right-hand column, which is the in-kind requests, which staff have kind of scoped out the value of those requests based on previous experience. They're not cash flow items, but they do require effort and, in some cases, materials on behalf of staff. So what we have is the two columns on the left, the name of the organization and the grant or the donation that they request. So I'm just gonna deal with the ones that are requesting dollars, and I won't deal with the ones that are requesting in-kind. So going down the list, the Spencerville Mill Foundation is looking for nine hundred dollars. Staff has already approved, I would say, the six thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars in in-kind. So just to get to the bottom line here, you can see that the total request totaled thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. And in our budget line, we have ten thousand dollars. So opening the discussion, Rebecca wants in here.
So through the chair, overall budget is ten thousand dollars. However, it is down to eighty-five hundred due to the two requests from the South Bramble Food Bank and the Youth Connect for the COVID-19 response.
Right. So the food bank had requested two thousand.
Correct.
Right? And we've already allocated one thousand in cash flow.
Correct.
And the other one was what?
Connect to youth.
And they were not an applicant here.
Correct.
But we dealt with them separately.
Correct.
And that five hundred dollars still comes out of here.
Correct.
All right, so we've got to basically allocate eleven thousand five something.
Eighty-five.
There's a thousand dollars for the food bank. The two thousand dollars for the food bank is embedded in that thirteen seven ninety, right?
Correct.
All right, we've given them a thousand. So now our total act is asked is twelve thousand seven ninety, right? And out of the twelve thousand seven ninety, we've allocated five hundred. So we got twelve thousand two fifty, as I understand it.
Really, that is correct.
Is that correct?
The five hundred was not included in this list in the first place.
Right, but am I understanding correctly that the five hundred is gonna come from this budget line?
It already has.
Right?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so that means that...
You have eighty-five hundred.
Say again?
You have eighty-five hundred left of this budget line to spend.
How do you reconcile that?
The original budget was ten, and we've...
Given fifty.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes, yes, yes. Yes. So it leaves us a difference of fifty-two ninety, is that right, Tom?
Forty-two ninety, because there was a thousand off of that. So instead of thirteen seven ninety, you have twelve seven ninety in ask.
Yes.
So to speak.
Okay, so we have forty-two ninety.
Correct.
You wanted in here?
Well, I had gone through the list. And what I had done, I'll just put this out, is for the Spencerville Mill, I reduced the nine to five. For the Cardinal Festival Committee asking two thousand, I reduced that to one thousand because they canceled the Canada Day events.
So what did you put it at?
A thousand. The Centennial Sixty-seven Public School, I have a bit of a problem with this. Because in the briefing note, it's written up as for the play structure. And the schools get all public money, taxpayers' money. That's really the only place they get their money from. So they're already committed to taxpayers' taxpayers' money. Plus, I don't like the idea of contributing to the school or the play structure because they don't allow that to be used twenty-four seven.
Yes, they do.
Oh, a lot of the schools lock their playground.
It's just in lockdown.
Well, maybe it's not locked down, but they don't want people on?
No, they're allowed to use it.
Summertime, too?
Yeah.
Same with us in Johnstown.
All the time.
Johnstown's open. Okay, but...
But there is a fence around it.
Okay, so before we get too many discussions, just for clarification.
Anyway, I've reduced that by a thousand, Mr. Mayor, is what I did. If it's used, okay, it's used, but a lot of school time. And for the food bank, everybody seems to be helping out the food bank. I mean, every time you turn around, it's for the food bank, it's for the food bank, it's for the food bank. We're already giving them tremendous amount of in-kind, six thousand dollars worth.
But we've given them a thousand.
And we've given them, we have given them a thousand.
So they're off the discussion here right now?
Well, they're still gonna get a thousand.
They got it.
No, they're asking for two thousand.
No, 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 they're asking for two. They've gotten one.
Right.
And so now our bottom line ask is twelve thousand seven ninety. Because they've got their allocation, unless you want, somebody wants to go above a thousand.
Well, I was just gonna leave it at a thousand.
Okay, well, okay, so leave it there. Go ahead.
And at the moment, that's all I have, so... The Johnstown ATV Club, they didn't really get anything last year. They've applied, they've applied before. And the St. Lawrence River Institute, they do such a fabulous job here at the Drummond Building every year.
But that's been canceled this year.
Okay, so then if it's been canceled...
It would've been last week.
Okay, then we should allocate four hundred dollars to them, at my opinion. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so is somebody tracking where we are here? What have we got?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred?
By Hughes.
Okay, so any other, anybody else wanna jump in here? Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Just in, sort of through the chair, feedback to Counselor Cameron's request for the cuts. Generally speaking, I agree that where he's headed, the Cardinal fireworks reduction of a thousand off of that, I understand that. What I will add to that and sort of making a request to keep that at two thousand would be that their fundraising possibilities are virtually nonexistent in this time. And for them to put on any form of reasonable celebration for Labor Day, I think that it's gonna be greatly impacted by the COVID-19 in that they're really going to rely upon, you know, some dollars. And, you know, for me, taking all of that out, I think one thing that we need to do when we're allowed to open up for business again certainly is to throw a bit of a bash. And maybe we, as council, can use that as a focus for our COVID-ending party. It's just a thought for that. For the Centennial Sixty-seven School, again, for myself, I agree a hundred percent with that one. And actually, I would extend that a little bit further and go for the two thousand and refer them to the port for maybe even a greater ask than what they're asking at the two thousand and refer them to the port of Johnstown for some of that seventy-five thousand dollars. So, yeah, so if that's the case, I would remove them from this list completely and, you know, push them towards that request. That is a capital-funded item, and the schools are allowed to be included with that. A hundred percent agree with the food bank, the St. Lawrence cut, and the Johnstown ATV as well, so...
So what's your total at?
I'd add the thousand for Cardinal back in for the fireworks. I just think that we need, you know, COVID celebration, and if that's a place that we can do it at Labor Day, it seems a reasonable timeframe. So I would add that back in. So with, I think I'd be taking another, well, then it's another thousand, it'd be another two forty past Hughes, so four thousand and four.
Are you going to, did I understand you correctly, Deputy Mayor, that you're going to reduce the Centennial School completely?
Yep.
Okay, then that makes up for the, then I don't mind putting a thousand back into the fireworks.
Yep, and the ATV two forty, I would take out as well.
Yes, so I've lost track of what the totals are here.
Just add two forty to Hughes.
I don't know what Hughes was.
Thirty-eight hundred.
It was thirty-eight hundred.
What's the two forties? Four thousand and four.
So four thousand and forty, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're up four thousand and forty, four zero four zero?
Yes, off of twelve seven nine zero. So you're, I think you're a hundred and fifty off.
Okay, so now...
Two fifty, sorry, two fifty.
So let's get the numbers here. So Spencerville Mill Foundation seems to be in for five hundred. Cardinal Community Festival Committee seems to be in for two thousand.
Correct.
Centennial School is going to the port. The Food for All Food Bank, it's got a thousand, it's kind of awkward to have it there. The South Edwardsburg Recreation Association, I haven't heard a number there yet at all. And they had to ask for twelve hundred and fifty last year, and they think they got four hundred. So I need a number for South Edwardsburg Recreation Association. Can I put in six hundred dollars there?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred dollars there. All right, now the Johnstown ATV Club is out. The St. Lawrence River Institute is out because they're not gonna operate this year. So now, as I understand it, I'm up of round five thousand, is that correct? I've gotta go back to Spencerville Business and Community Connections. They're asking for two thousand dollars. Last year, they had asked for one thousand six hundred and twenty-six, and they got two hundred. I'd like to put in four hundred dollars for Spencerville Business and Community Connections, just as a starter number. Cardinal Community Festival Committee's still in. Girls of Upper Canada, Inc., they're asking for two thousand dollars. It looks like they had a request in twenty-eighteen, but I don't see a request from twenty-nineteen. Did I miss something?
No, they do not always request each year.
Okay, so they didn't, they're requesting two thousand this year. I don't have a number for them yet. Can I put in five hundred dollars for the Girls, Inc. of Upper Canada, just as a placeholder?
I'd like to see that a little higher, Mr. Mayor, they do a wonderful job with the girls.
Well, we'll just put it in as a placeholder for now and see what we get for a total. Spencerville Scout Group, now, the red indicates that they were a late submission after the deadline. But they're a volunteer group, and I don't know how late they were, but the staff gave them some slack there. In twenty-eighteen, they asked for a thousand and were granted a thousand. And it looks like in twenty-nineteen, they didn't get anything, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so they're back asking us for a thousand dollars this term. Does anybody have a number to put in for Spencerville Scout Group?
Five hundred for Spencerville Scout.
I'll put in five hundred for Spencerville Scout Group. Food for All Food Bank, we've covered. The South Edwardsburg Recreation Association is in at eight hundred. Now, does anybody have the new total as to what we're at? Should be getting close, but not there yet.
Forty-seven hundred.
That's our total?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's gotta be higher than that. Five and four is nine, ten, two thousand nine, three thousand nine, four thousand nine counting the food bank, four thousand nine, five thousand seven, including the Recreation Association. So you have five thousand seven, including the Recreation Association and the food bank. That, is that what you got?
Well, I have forty-seven hundred because I didn't include a thousand for food.
So forty-seven hundred without the food bank.
Correct.
All right, so without the food bank, we're at forty-seven hundred, and we still can allocate up to eight thousand five, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, we don't have to allocate at all, but just a different kind of a problem than we've had other years. This time, we still have unallocated, at this point in time, three thousand eight hundred. Now, I did hear some talk, I forget who it was, that, oh, Girls, Inc., you wanted a number slightly larger for Girls, Inc.
That was my request, yes.
What number do you have in mind?
Well, I didn't, I...
Can I put in eight hundred? I'll put in eight hundred.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'll put in eight hundred, that reduces my availability to three thousand five hundred. I have three thousand five hundred available, we don't have to allocate at all. Is anybody that, going through this list, that feels some, one of these should have a little bit more?
I would...
Counselor Hunter?
Well, we cut the Spencerville Mill Foundation down there, just asked for their nine hundred, basically, the nine hundred dollars, they're asking for, just to cover their sewer charges there. I think we should give them the nine hundred, hundred dollars. They're not asking for promotion, and I think they're just asking to help cover their sewer charges. And this year with COVID, they're not gonna have anybody coming there, so they're gonna have a hard time paying their bills, so...
Okay, so can I change the five hundred that we've got on the page right now? I'd like to change it to a thousand, just 'cause it makes the math easier. Then I have two thousand five hundred still to allocate. Of the South Edwards Recreation from eight to a thousand, Mr. Mayor? So the Recreation from eight to a thousand, all right? And now I have two hundred off that, I've got two thousand three hundred to allocate.
I go back to the Johnstown ATV Club and add the two forty back in then?
I'm gonna resist that a little bit because it's adults. And I just, I have a real problem. Go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chair, it's probably not a bad thing to have a couple thousand dollars to have to allocate later on in the year. Typically, in the past, we've seen organizations come later on in the year, and having that flexibility may be valuable.
Okay, but here's the problem that we run into there, and again, it's a council decision. We have been fairly adamant about get your applications in on time. We won't entertain late applications, and we have provided a little bit of extra leeway for Spencerville Scout Group, which was late coming in. Now, if we save that two thousand three hundred for late applicants, we are kind of breaching our policy, if I can put it that way. So what is the will of council here? Are you prepared to see a breach of policy and deal with the twenty-three hundred later should late applications come in? I'd like to just get a feeling for that concept around the table. In other words, are you, first of all, two things. Are we prepared to, are we prepared to leave the numbers sit where they go with two thousand three hundred unallocated? And then the second part of the issue is, are you prepared to accept late applications at other times during the year? So let's speak only to the concept of breaching the policy, as we've already established, and accepting late applications during the year. Can just speak to that issue alone. Okay, Deputy Mayor, and then Counselor Hunter?
Sure, I'll go. Different year, for sure, this year. There's so much uncertainty, and like ourselves, we've extended tax deadlines already once we're unsure of exactly what the financial outlook looks like for the end of August. I'm sure lots of community groups and organizations may be in that same mode, and they may have not a huge number, the twenty-three hundred, but they may have certainly some use or some larger need that gets exposed as the year goes on. So taking the advice of the CAO and seeing that stay in as late application dollars, I like that idea, especially for good organizations that will need it as time goes on.
Okay, so then Counselor Hunter, you wanted in here?
Well, I can see that it is a different year this year. Just because it is, I don't think we should change our policy. I don't think we, everybody had a deadline. But most community groups, yes, they're gonna have trouble raising funds, but most of them aren't gonna be doing things that they generally raise funds to do in different projects and stuff that are gonna be put on. They're not gonna be putting them on this year, they're not gonna have to be able to allow to put them on. So I think we need to go ahead to the groups that know they can do stuff, but fast for money. I think we should fund them, and if something's really drastic, they can do, we'll deal with it at the time, so...
Okay, and the other, okay, I'm gonna recognize Counselor Cameron, and anybody else wanna speak before I go back in, and Counselor Dillabaw then? Deal with the single issue of late application.
Yes, but there's also another, there's also another part to that, too, regarding the lateness, and that is of the evaluation form that they're to send in before the end of December. I don't think we should, and I understand where Deputy Mayor Deschamps is coming from with this year being a totally different year, but I think we've gotta draw the line somewhere. And if we let it go again, it's gonna happen again next year, it's gonna happen again after that, and so on. I think we draw the line this year, that if you weren't in on time, you're not considered.
So keep the policy in place?
Keep the policy as it is.
Okay, Counselor Dillabaw?
Yeah, I agree with keeping the policy the way it is, but I wanna, I wanna go back to some of the money, though.
Go ahead. Okay, well, wait a minute, just before we do that, the one other point that I wanna make about changing the policy or letting the policy slip for late applications is this. If we don't allocate that twenty-three hundred, and there's twenty-three hundred left unallocated, and you're prepared to accept late applications, what do you do in the case where you get an application for twenty-three hundred dollars, and it comes in the middle of July? Is it first come, first served, take the balance of the pot? Or how do you deal with a late application? So that's another issue that arises if you change the policy. So let's go, everybody's spoken, and let me think where I am. I've got, don't change the policy, don't change the policy, don't change the policy, and I'm of a mind of that same ilk, and you're saying that you'd like to see the policy changed. So do these two gentlemen want into this discussion?
I don't think you should change the policy.
And Mr. Rodling?
I don't either, I think you should change the policy. I think you tell those people that come late that we're sorry, that this has occurred, but there is a deadline, and we would suggest you put in an entry for next year to meet the deadline.
Okay, I think for clarification, I don't wanna rewrite the policy. I agree with the policy as it's stated. I think I said that this is an acceptable year.
Yeah.
And we're looking at ways of supporting our organization. John, Counselor Hunter, sorry, made an argument that the Spencerville Mill won't be doing any business, thus their application will only cover their sewer charges. I mean, we're recognizing that, yes, they got it in on time. There may be other organizations that don't realize that, you know, there are shortfalls. They're worrying about other things right now than community grants and donations. So rewriting the policy, no, I think for next year, that policy should stand fit. But looking for ways to support our community, our community organization, and helping them out when they need or when they have need, twenty-three hundred dollars, pretty small amount of dollars in this general budget. The fact that this discussion's gone on for this long is surprising to me. It's not a lot to support our organizations, and the thought that we won't during a global pandemic extend that possibility of a deadline or soften that deadline a little bit for our great community organizations is concerning to me.
Okay, and so everybody's spoken on that issue. I think there's a consensus there. But you wanted to go back to the issue of allocating additional dollars within the groups that have already been allocated?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give the three hundred dollars to the Johnstown ATV Club. I don't know why you're saying it's just for children, I mean, we have Spencerville Mill Foundation, Spencerville Business Community Connection.
Yeah.
It's the same, and these kids, this Johnstown ATV, they have young kids, not, they're over sixteen, but they're teaching them how to responsibilities of trails, environment, et cetera.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's any difference in gears, just for adults. I disagree, I'd like to have Johnstown ATV Club at three hundred.
So put them in at three hundred, and now there's two thousand available to be allocated? Two thousand available to be allocated, Counselor Hunter?
Well, I can see where you're suggesting the ATV Club is training kids and stuff, but I still don't think we need to support a club that actually charges a fee to be a member. They need more money, they need to raise the fees. It's not a free club, you don't just sign up and join, you have to pay a membership fee to be allowed, so...
That's true. I've got them in at three hundred, and if I recall correctly from the briefing note, the three hundred was to buy uniforms or some sort of designations for their trail wardens. That's their trail wardens, is what it was, yeah. Okay, they're in at three hundred, looking for a counterpoint to Counselor Hunter's allocation if you want to further debate the three hundred. But I've still got two thousand available here, as I read the numbers.
I don't believe we've ever given money to the ATV Club.
No, that is correct.
I think you're right.
Okay, any other discussion here? Don't get more discussion, I'm gonna leave the two thousand unallocated. Counselor Hunter?
Well, being from this area, I guess, and being that, I guess it is a bit of a conflict that I have grandkids that go to Spencerville School, but I still think I'm... that I have grandkids that go to Spencerville School, but I still think them, it's, I don't recall the school ever asking us for, Parents Council asking us to fund anything before, for, and I think they can go to, to the park to get some money, but I think that it'd be nice if council would at least allot five hundred dollars towards them to show the council supports, Parents Council, and the money they're raising. They've raised over, it's over thirty thousand dollars. They've raised already back breaking work and stuff over three years to fund. And the school board doesn't fund playgrounds, but Parents Council has to raise all the money. Really, they don't have, our kids don't have any structures there, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in five hundred dollars at Centennial Public School Parent Council. Remember, it's the parent council that you're funding, not the school board, and it's the playground structure that you're funding, not, not the, not the educational program. And we do know that, and, and we have Counselor Hunter's assurances that the playground structure is available to the community, uh, twenty-four hours a day, including the summer months. So now, if I put in five hundred dollars for the Centennial Public School Parent Council, I'm at one thousand five hundred dollars unallocated at this point.
Could we put in another two hundred dollars to the Girls Inc.?
Another two hundred dollars to the Girls Inc., that would draw them up to one thousand dollars.
Yes.
And, uh, okay, two thousand off the fifteen hundred, I've got one thousand three hundred to allocate. About to wind up this discussion and leave that thirteen hundred dollars unallocated. Counselor Hunter.
I'd like to see it, maybe just leave the thousand dollars there. I think South Edwardrecreations Association, that, we had down to a thousand, they only asked for twelve, twelve fifty. We cut them back pretty severely last year on, on their ask. I'd like to see us give them what they're asking for, so.
So, uh, they were at a thousand, I'll put them at one thousand three hundred, just 'cause I like working with the round numbers, and that would leave me with one thousand unallocated. And did I hear you say that you were prepared to, uh, leave the one thousand unallocated? Okay, I'm about to.
Mayor Deschamps said we have a thousand dollars, now something could happen, but.
All right.
And I'm not, I'll say it right now, I'm not beyond, on, if some major thing happens to one of our community associations down, down the way, that we have to look at finding finance in someplace above that thousand dollars, that we can look at it.
And I think, you know, it's, I think a one-time, uh, wait, if we leave the thousand dollars, we, we know that we've got dollars available, even though it is a breach of the policy. Go ahead.
Uh, bef, before we go any further, can we just do a one-hundred percent, uh, clarification on all of the dollar amounts to make sure that we're accurate, that we're at a thousand?
Okay, I'll go, I'll do that right now. So here's what I have, I'm hoping that somebody will correct my mathematics as we go along. I have the Spencerville Mill Foundation at one thousand dollars. I have Spencerville Business and Community Connections at four hundred dollars? Four hundred dollars. I have the Cardinal Community Festival Committee at two thousand dollars. Centennial Public School Parent Council at five hundred. Girls Inc. Upper Canada at one thousand. Spencerville Scout Group at five hundred. Food for All Food Bank, because they're on my paper, at a thousand.
But that's not part of the, but, don't include the thousand in the calculation.
That's what I've, okay. South Edwardrecreations Association at thirteen hundred. Johnstown ATV Club at three hundred. That's my total, that's what I have. And what does that total to?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand. And I had eight thousand five hundred available. So I'm wrong someplace, I've now got a thousand five hundred still available.
I thought we had St. Lawrence River Institute for four hundred.
Oh, it's already happened.
We took them out.
Last week, it was canceled.
Oh, yeah, canceled.
What's that?
Sorry, the St. Lawrence River Institute, that, that was canceled for this year.
It's already banned last week.
So someplace along the line, I missed five hundred. I've got one thousand five hundred not allocated at this point in time. Still prepared to wind up the discussion and leave the one thousand five hundred?
With, I, I'm fully prepared to, to wrap it up, sorry, through the chair, as, as long as, you know, we, um, you know, will still, if there are extenuating circumstances for some of our community clubs that, that haven't, uh, come forth with an application at this time, that we as a council or we as a committee are willing to consider those applications.
Well, the problem is, they'll, they'll come in one at a time, and, well, anyway.
So be it.
We'll deal with it when it comes. All right, um, about to wind this off. Okay, we have the numbers, and I'm not gonna go through them again, I don't think it's necessary. All right, that winds up that discussion, and I'm at now, uh, item number six B on the agenda. I was looking for a resolution. I was looking for a resolution here to, um, support Village of Merrickville's, uh, resolution. And we don't have a, a printed recommendation in front of us, uh, but the intent, I think everybody can see the intent of the, um, of the Merrickville, uh, resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of Village of Merrickville does hereby respectfully request that the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry provide the village with supporting evidence with respect to the expansion of these wetland designations. And I think all of us in our planning have seen the fact that, uh, at different points, our wetlands become extended without much justification. So is there a will around the table to support this recommendation, this, uh, resolution from Merrickville? You wanna speak, oh, can I have Counselor Hunter first, and then you?
Absolutely, I think we do, 'cause I think the Ministry has just carried away with these wetlands designation, they're designated farmland, but as tile graining ditches running, running through, that happened to be abandoned for a little while, the beavers blocked them up, now they want to declare it wetland, so.
We have the same interest, so it's true, yeah. Okay, so I have one speaker to support that, Counselor, Mr. Radley.
Uh, do we know what the new and expanded, uh, designations are? Do we have any idea what this change in the policy, the provincial policy?
Um, now where are you referring to that?
Well, on the actual, there's a page number, but on the actual, um, voted resolution by, by the town.
Yes.
Uh, the second whereas.
Yep.
Uh, states that the, uh, revisions be included in the official plan update that they're working on. And it says, uh, the updated provisions of new and expanded provincially significant wetlands designation.
Okay, so here's the issue there. The, 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 the Corporation of Village of Merrickville is going through an official plan amendment.
Yeah.
The provincial policy statements require that the village put those new and expanded provincially significant wetlands into their official plan. Merrickville Wilford is refusing to do that because the ministry will not justify why they've expanded the wetlands.
What is, what, what expansion have they conducted?
Fairly significant.
The reason I'm interested in this is, I got, I got one point four acres in this township, and at least half an acre is wetland.
Yep.
And so I'm very interested in this subject, okay?
Yep.
Because I pay taxes on that useless bloody land.
Yep.
So.
You have your swans on, Mr. Radley.
In any case, I'd like to know if there's a change to the policy of the government that may affect my property.
No, not all. What it is, is that the Ministry of Natural Resources can just willy-nilly come in and, and designate a wetland.
They're declaring a, uh, uh, before it wasn't wetland, and now it's wetland.
No, it can also be this way. The wetland was this size, now it's this size. Can be, uh, they can do it either of two ways, and they don't have to justify it.
Oh, okay, well, I support, you know, I'm, you know what I'm coming to. I support the, our effort on, on this, um, issue. And, um, so that's, uh, that was my question, uh, you know, uh, with respect to this particular move.
Uh, Mayor Struthers has spoken about this at County Council a couple of times.
Yeah.
And that's really a sticking point in getting their official plan redone, because they, they were, they're refusing to include the expanded wetlands in their official plan without sufficient justification from the Ministry of Natural Resources.
Yeah, well, it's phenomenal government overreach, as usual, but anyways.
All right, so do I, am I catching a will around the table to support this?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, uh, the only thing that I would request then is that when the motion comes forward at the council meeting, um, the, the third operative clause, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to, I would just ask that we take off at the bottom and all Ontario municipalities. I think that creates an undue hardship for staff, and as well, it doesn't have any additional impact because it's already circulated.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion will come forward at the council meeting. That's good, I'm moving on then to item number six C. At item number six C, I have the natural gas expansion project survey. Now, I've asked Rebecca, and she did conclude it in the, uh, package, uh, two letters. One is a letter that we, as a township, would send to the residents of County Road Two, the Weir Road, County Road Twenty-One, and the Village of Spencerville. Now, it's a, it's an onerous task for, for staff to get those addresses. I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we might be able to get those addresses from the company that conducted our, um, internet voting. I don't know whether we've thought about that.
They won't release that, sorry.
They don't?
No, it's private information, it's only used for the election, they do not make any exceptions.
They do not make any exceptions, no, no.
Do, do we know, Mr. Mayor, what, where the start and the finish is, like, exactly?
Yes, uh, so I've given you the maps. I've now, for the first time, got the maps.
Yeah.
And, uh, the maps are accurate. And the reason I'm bringing this forward is because our project has been nominated to Enbridge. Enbridge has accepted the project. We know that the project will be going up the line to the Ontario Energy Board. What we don't know is whether it'll pass the Energy Board and get up to the Minister. Enbridge, in order to enhance the application, hired a firm to do a marketing survey. That firm batched it up, botched it up badly. It, it, the letters went out to people, telling people to go to a certain website. Many people did not receive the letters. Of the people that did receive the letters, many of them could not get on the website. Many of them got their letters after the website had closed. So the long and the short of it was, is that the survey was not an accurate survey. I've spent the better part of three weeks getting us to the point where, and by the way, the other part that happened someplace along the line is that the two components of the project, the County Road Two project and the Weir Road in Spencerville project, those somehow got separated into two separate projects. I had to get agreement that they were all part of the same project, I've got that established. Now, what I'm asking for now is council approval for us to do our own survey. And you can see the survey instrument on the back of the first page, it's just an expression of interest. It will require staff time and resources, and I'm looking for a discussion on whether or not council will support our own marketing survey to enhance our own application. Looking for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Today. Okay, well, I have Counselor Dillabon first. And I think I heard Brad, Counsel, then I heard you.
Do we know, uh, like, uh, the documents speak for themselves, but do we know, uh, if we submit this, uh, that, uh, Enbridge will accept it?
Yes.
And do we have a drop dead date from Enbridge as to when they have to have it?
No. Here's, I'll give you the sequence of events, so you understand the sequence. And I've talked to my contact at Enbridge as late as Thursday. Enbridge was hoping to have their submissions go to the Minister of Energy, Ministry, go to the Ontario Energy Board about the first or second week of June, but that's a soft date.
Mm-hmm.
All right, once, at any point along this timeframe that I'm gonna talk about, this survey can be inserted into the process, that's for sure. We, if, if we miss Enbridge's submission to the Ontario Energy Board, we can take our survey results and send them directly to the Energy Board. The Energy Board is required to submit their list of projects to the Ministry of Energy in August. Again, that's a soft date. And I'm also hoping that we're gonna take our survey results and submit them to our M P P. That becomes political. So at any point along this timeline, these survey results would serve us well, I think. I don't know whether that answers your question. And I think I had Counselor Dillabon, then Counselor Cameron.
I could finish this.
Oh, sorry.
So the difficulty with getting addresses is, uh, a problem, actually.
Yep.
And, uh, if staff would prepare what they want done with respect to the County Road Two part, portion of it, like in other words, this thing and a return envelope or whatever that could do. Counselor Dillabon and myself will be happy to deliver them.
Would you do that?
Yes.
Would you do that?
I would help to.
It's all right.
Okay.
The words are not about those, but you're just for a bunch of swans.
Well, it's okay, but sure.
I did that, actually, my first, I went and knocked on about sixty doors to make sure that survey, and it was just a flop.
Yep.
And I was scared of it, so my, I, I support this. My only, uh, thing, yes, we'd deliver it, and I would like to May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, highlight it.
Yeah.
Make sure people understand that's a drop dead, May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty.
You gotta get it in, you gotta get it back.
And they don't throw it on their kitchen table, or they don't lose it.
Okay, well, if you're gonna, if you, if you folks are prepared to deliver door to door.
Yeah.
That enhances that. Now, that covers the County Road Two project. We still have the Weir Road, County Road Twenty-One, and Spencerville portions to be dealt, dealt with.
Well.
Now, we can deal with those in a slightly different way, because I think in the Spencerville part of it, we could just do a, a, a drop in the mailbox, could we not? Of all the mailboxes, just to the occupant?
It'll go further than, uh, 'cause I, I live in Augusta, and I receive anything that's got a K O E one X O.
You do, right?
Mm-hmm, and I live the other side of Roboc, so.
Yes.
It'll get further than, you'll be, you'll be pushing it out to further people.
All right, um, so would that take it to people that aren't in the area? It would.
It would.
Counsel, let's see if we can find a mechanism. Counselor Hunter.
Well, we're just, we'd just be able to deliver these from our town line on, on the Weir Road. We wouldn't be able to deliver them by Augusta.
Now, just so you know, I've sent this entire package to Mayor Malanga and asked him if he would be interested in doing a similar survey in his portion of the township. I haven't heard back from him, I, I've just been busy, haven't followed up the, the email I sent him with a telephone call, but I can't see why he would not. I mean, he's got a relatively smaller area.
Well, I'm not a, haven't been too worried about COVID nineteen, I know another. I think I can get another couple of members from our Masonic Lodge, that I think we could take on, deliver them to Spencerville and Twenty-One area, so.
Which really, well.
Only took me about two and a half days to go around campaigning, so I think I can, I'll find it.
Days more for the twenty-nine, I can take two days to.
I agree. Two people in the car, one dropping it in the mailbox.
Okay.
The other thing is, if you talk to the post office, they'll deliver in a certain area.
Yes, they will.
They did that for the election.
Well, if, the point is, though, that if I've got, if I've got volunteers on County Road Two, and I've got County Road, uh, I've got Spencerville and County Road Twenty-One volunteers there, all the support that we really need from the township is the, uh, is the preparation of the packages.
Yeah, like covering letter and an envelope to return it.
Yeah. Uh, well, we're not even talking, actually, we talked about whether we were gonna provide return envelopes, and we thought, if we don't provide return envelopes, then we- and we thought, if we don't provide return envelopes, then we know that they're serious. If they're serious enough, they'll find an envelope and a stamp and they'll get it to us.
I think the main, main thing is, we've got, we've got, we're gonna, going to start, have, ready to start delivering this and we've really put a splash in the paper and on our Facebook pages and stuff that councillors will be coming around the pos and a survey in your mailbox and it needs to be returned to us by the twenty-ninth.
Okay, well.
If I see people out, I'm going to stop and talk to them and make sure that they know what it, what it is, but if they're not home, we're going to stick it in the mailbox and.
Yeah.
There, but I think we need to make sure that people don't just see it as another survey thing.
Yeah. Well, I think if it's from the township, they'll take it a little bit more serious. Okay, uh, so I'm getting a feeling that I've got consensus around the table that the township will support this in terms of preparing the packages. Is that a fair, a fair summary here? Uh, Deputy Mayor, you want to add just?
One maybe last comment, uh, for, for ease. Is it really unreasonable to throw a, a stamp and, and a return envelope for the, for the township in there so that we don't have every single person that we drop this off? If they don't have a stamp and don't have an envelope, then they have to go and get a stamp and an envelope? I mean, is it?
Stamp and envelope.
Is it really that unreasonable? I mean.
Well.
We, we want the best results from this.
No, we're twenty-one.
I mean.
The, how much is the envelope?
No, we're twenty, isn't it?
It's to find one, I couldn't find one at home if I wanted to.
Yeah, and that's what I, my point is.
Some people don't keep them.
I mean, I'd rather have the self.
Let's take away all the reasons to not get it back.
And get it, let them fill it out.
And tell them. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Does that have a machine?
So here's a question. Here's a question. Does, does the staff have a mechanism to repair, I'm going to use a number, five hundred addressed envelopes and put a stamp on them? Do you have a mechanism to do that?
I can do it, it's okay, I don't care.
Who's answering? Nobody's looking at me. Mr. C A O. They're not eager.
Well, hey, hey, you gotta like.
I don't plan to do any.
No, but.
Give me a box.
So, so are, are you, are you looking at just a, a stamp with the municipal address on it? Not individual?
No, no.
Just returned address for here.
So can we, is that okay? Can we do it?
If, if committee feels that, we can certainly have that package ready by, by, by the end of the week for sure.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, so committees don't make decisions, I'm in an awkward spot here. Uh, I'm looking for consensus that won't change when I get to council. Because I think what you're hearing is the C A O is prepared to act on the guidance of the committee pending the decision of council.
I've heard you don't want us to hang you out in the dry.
I'm glad you put it that way. It may come up again today in another, in another discussion.
Just for a minute. Are you on with me?
Absolutely.
And myself.
I'll go too.
Okay, alright, so I think I have consensus on the following things. Staff will prepare the packages and the packages will contain an address, a, 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 an envelope addressed to the township, a stamped envelope addressed to the township. We have consensus all around the table. Alright, I'm going to terminate discussion on that.
Could I just ask one point here, uh, there's regarding the letter? It's a little on the confusing side. In the first paragraph, there's two, two points, number one and number two. Number two, and I'm just going to read this, just tell me if I'm missing something here. County Road Eighteen to Weir Road. Then, east on County Road Twenty-two, Two, Twenty-One to Spencerville.
Okay, County Road Eighteen, then you turn off to Weir Road. Okay, so then to County Road Twenty-One.
So are we, are we going to be doing work on County Road Twenty-One? Or, I'm sorry, County Road Eighteen and Weir Road?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it gets to County Road Twenty-One at the top.
Okay.
And then it turns east and goes along County Road Twenty-One.
Alright, so Weir, it's County Road Eighteen, Weir Road and Twenty-One?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we can, we can fix that off.
That's fine.
Okay. Alright.
And we're doing all of Spencerville in there, right?
And all of Spencerville, yeah.
And does fire the fireball?
Uh, no, does not cross the bridge.
Up to the bridge.
Up to the bridge, yeah.
Across the bridge.
And my talk with them, uh, I think is if they get the project, they may find a way, but I can't.
Be nice to get our fireball on.
Yes.
After a gash.
Yeah, yeah. And that little subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Couple years back.
I think that ends that discussion. Now, how does the staff want us to address that? Are you, are you prepared to act on the consensus that you've seen or do you need a motion? Uh, because there is an expenditure of dollars here, do you need a motion at the council meeting? If you feel you need a motion, uh, would you please prepare it in the package for the council meeting?
Well, uh, by the time that motion comes, the majority of the work will be done.
That's correct, yeah. Alright, alright, I'm going now then to six D. And six D gets me to the Ontario Job Site Challenge. And let me tell you, uh, that this is becoming very interesting. Uh, the C A O and I have had several discussions with Infrastructure Ontario over the past, actually, two weeks. And you see in front of you a proposal from Novatech. And this is what I'm calling the next step in the process. Now, our discussions with Infrastructure Ontario have been very interesting because they concern ownership of the land. And our first issue was that the burden reduction team wanted confirmation from Infrastructure Ontario that Infrastructure Ontario knew what, what we were doing with their land. We were able to satisfy that. Now, they're coming back to us and saying, well, um, Infrastructure Ontario doesn't have a program to enhance this land, in other words, to do the zoning that's required and the planning that's required and the servicing that's required. Nor does the owner of the land, which is the Ministry of Government Services, there are no programs for that. So, they're asking us if we would give up our interest and let the government handle this thing. And we've sort of said, well, not at this point. We, we're kind of interested in going a little bit further down this street while we're still in control. The proposal from Novatech, we've shared with them and we've said that Novatech provides us with the guidance or the roadmap to get to the next step. And we think we'd like to proceed along that line. Now, you can see from the proposal that Novatech is giving us that their total that they're looking for to get us through the planning phase, not the servicing phase, is seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. I was very reluctant to bring a recommendation to council to do that until I had a better understanding of where we stood, uh, both politically and in the running of the, of the, of the program submissions. So here's where we stand. On March the twenty-third, the government issued an extension of the deadline. They extended the deadline for submissions from March the thirty-first without putting an end date. Get them in as quickly as you can. Now, that said to me, that, it actually said two things to me. It said, number one, maybe we need more applications, might have said that. And it might have also said, we're extending the deadline because of the pandemic situation. That's the cover story. I've used my very best political connections to try to find out how many applications they've received, but everybody's being very closed mouth. I do know that the burden reduction team or a lot of the people that were working on the Ontario Job Site Challenge have been hived off directly to, now, got to understand how this is structured. Associate Minister Sakaria is looking after the Job Site Challenge. Fidelli is in the same ministry and he's the senior minister. Most of, or a lot of the people that were looking on the burden reduction team have been hived off over to Fidelli's shop to get Fidelli's daily briefings organized. As you know, the province is really trying to loosen things up. Conservation areas are opening up today. Garden centers and retail hardware stores opened up on Saturday morning. So, they're thinking that it's going to be a little bit of time before they get this burden reduction team, the whole team back together. So, my advice to council is, and my recommendation is, that we should adopt this and accept this proposal from Novatech. But in doing so, we have to keep our eyes wide open and know that. And I'm referring you to the second page of their proposal where they talk about the additional studies that will be required. I don't want to hide anything here. If you look at their second page, Phase Two, Coordination and Preparation of Supporting Studies. This seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, Novatech will coordinate the preparation of the following studies by others that are anticipated to be required. We don't necessarily know that they will be required as part of the official plan amendment application. We won't know that they are actually required until Novatech begins their discussion at the county level. And at that point, we'll be able to determine whether all of these studies are going to be required. But you should be aware, Employment Lands Review, we don't even have an estimate as to what that will cost. Natural Heritage, Ecological Site Assessment, Species at Risk, Environmental Impact Assessment. Novatech is proposing a desktop study which would be in the neighborhood of fourteen hundred and seventy dollars. Terrain Analysis, Geotechnical and Hydrological Investigation. We don't have estimates for the terrain analysis. The geotechnical, once it goes beyond desktop, would be about nine thousand estimated. Hydrogeological, once it goes beyond desktop, would be around five thousand. The Archaeological Assessment, Stage One, would be around six thousand if it goes beyond desktop. I'm not proposing at this point that we authorize any of those other studies. All I'm proposing is that we adopt the seventy-two thousand five hundred proposal and that we fund that proposal from the Modernization Fund. You saw from your packages that there's around five hundred thousand or so left in the Modernization Fund, maybe a little bit more. And I have assurances that that would probably be a good use of that money. So that's the recommendation that I'm putting forward as a, um, as a part of this, uh, discussion. And I'm looking for discussion and debate. And I have a draft motion here that I'm prepared to, uh, ask someone to move. I can't move it myself from the chair, but I'm looking for someone that would move it to adopt this report. So, discussion, number one.
Sure. Uh, in respect to, to people being moved off of, um, you know, the Job Site Challenge and on to, uh, different committees, uh, certainly, um, Minister Sakaria has his hands full with the Jobs and Recovery Committee, trying to get, uh, each individual industry lined up and, and set up, uh, so that they can reopen and, and get back to business. And it's pretty understandable that, that this has been, uh, slid a little bit to the back corner, but it, but it will, it will be back for sure. Uh, the, uh, input that you've added with, uh, respect to doing these, uh, studies and doing them, I mean, it shows the seriousness that we're taking on our part to the province to, to get ready for the Job Site Challenge and, and from my recollection, when we sat down, uh, uh, all as a council and we outlined, uh, our priorities for our term of council, it was everyone's priority that industrial land, uh, was one of those priorities. Uh, that hasn't changed for me. Um, this land is, is needed, we really don't have much expansion area for industrial area and, and, you know, I think, uh, getting our ducks in a row and getting started towards that is, shows the priority level that it has for us. So, a hundred percent support the, uh, the motion of moving it on.
Councillor Hunter and then councillor Cameron and then councillor Dillawal.
No, I'm, have no problem with it, being a mover of this motion to go ahead. It is seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. It's an investment, nothing in business that you don't invest in that isn't a gamble someplace along, along the way. I read your reading of it too, that, uh, this extension, it might be a little bit for covert. It would be made pretty quickly, I would almost guess that they didn't get near as many submissions of people that are willing to invest the money that's required to establish this much industrial land. I think we're probably in one of the top realms of there. And having been, uh, served on council over forty years ago when, uh, we did a study here at the time of what this industrial land bank that our eminent provincial government decided to establish forty, fifty years ago. At that time, they estimated it was costing the township almost a million dollars a year in taxes and lost income off that land. I'm not that good in math, but I figured it's pretty near forty million dollars or more the township's lost. If we have to invest seventy-two hundred, seventy-two thousand, even more than that in the future to, to start gaining money back from this, I'm all in for it, so.
Amen.
I did most of our rate figures hard.
Thank you very much.
Councillor.
Councillor Cameron.
Uh, I concur with what's, uh, what's been said by both the deputy mayor and councillor Hunter, uh, and I, uh, I, I, I support this a hundred percent. And I'm really, really happy that the Modernization Fund is going to be moved for this.
Councillor Dillawal.
You have my blessing, uh, Mr. Mayor. I already had those pamphlets. I'll do it up in my business card and start dropping off my hand, so there's another little job I got to drop off my hand. But, yes, um, my only, my only question is, why do they want in on it now? Why do they say, hey, we would like to maybe take it away from you? Could you answer me that, Mr. Mayor? It's a tough one, it's a tough one. Uh, but, look, the C A O was on the call, do you want to speak to that?
Still, still processing.
I'm sorry?
I said, I, I'm still processing.
You're still processing?
Yes.
It's tough to read what these guys are telling us.
That's a very, very good answer, thank you. It's tough to read what these guys are telling us or asking of us. It's very tough to read, they're playing their cards very close to the vest. But I think that, I mean, when I, I thought about this long and hard Friday, Saturday, Sunday and this morning. I think, I think our best move at this point is to keep control here, keep control.
As long as possible.
As long as possible, yeah.
I'm gonna, do you mind if I pass it to you?
No, no.
One way of looking at it too is they're real curious about going ahead with this too. If we do the late, late work on, on it and get the P R that, uh, we're pushing forward for this and it goes, goes ahead, it's going to look a lot more like the township gaining than what the ministry is gaining. It might be, uh, if they were doing it on their own, it might be a lot more political points of. own, it might be a lot more political points of
Yeah.
If they were to say, we controlled it all all the way through.
But can they pull the rug from underneath us if we went and did all this and all of a sudden they come up and say, look, it's our land anyways, which it is? Which it is.
Well, we don't own it.
No, they do.
They own it.
But that's what I'm saying. Is it possible that they can, we can go through all this and they know what it looks like and it looks good? Would they pull the rug from underneath us?
Well, there's still two avenues open to us and I'll tell you what they are. We've still proposed to the government in our initial submission that we be appointed as agents of the owner. Infrastructure Ontario has tried to slide that concept aside. And they're saying Government Services doesn't have a program to spend this kind of money. When I, when we were talking to them last, which was, I think, on Thursday, that concept of us being appointed as agent of the owner had slipped. Well, because there were so many things on the table, I forgot to bring that forward again. But that is strictly a political process. If the Minister of Government Services decides that he wants an agent to look after this for him, it will happen. Now, I don't think that it's any secret at all to say that our MPP really is behind this project. There's just no question about that. Made public statements to that effect. So I think for us to keep as much control here as long as we can is the right thing to do. This is the next step.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that, post that concept. I think we have to find a way to become part, like a shared partnership where we trust each other more.
Yep, yep.
we could, if we had total control on this, if you look at some of these studies that have to be done. And let's say, for example, just as a hypothetical, we're in, if we're in total control and we get a, you know, the archaeological assessment gets done and it has to go beyond the desktop. And if they find an arrowhead on that property, we're going to sit there for years bucking various organizations to break out of that. But if the government is our partner, we have a lot more power and sway and so on to get that kind of a problem cleared and under the way.
Well, there's another aspect of this and I think it'll come out when NOVATEC starts discussion with the county. And that will be, are these studies going to be necessary on this land for this purpose?
I think, if I may, and if I'm speaking of something that I shouldn't be, then cut me off really quick. But earlier, am I not, if I'm not mistaken, was it not indicated that there would be an expediting of things like this? If, if for a chosen site?
Yeah.
I mean, they made it pretty clear that, you know, changes to OPs and things like that would be, if my recollection is correct, and I hope it wasn't close meeting, that that would be expedited, so.
Yeah. But what that, what remains to be seen is what they meant by expedited.
Fair enough.
Or whether it was cheap talk. In any case, you've got.
I think being prepared is good. Yeah, absolutely. So, so can I read? I'll do my best. Whereas the township has received a proposal from NOVATEC to develop a three-phase work plan and fee estimate to guide the Cedar Grove Road Site through the necessary county official plan amendment process for a land use designations and zoning changes and a service servicing option report. Therefore, be it resolved that the Administration and Finance Committee recommends that council accept the three-phase NOVATEC proposal dated May the sixth, 2020, and authorize the immediate commencement of the work at an upside cost of seventy-two thousand five hundred to be taken from the Modernization Fund Reserve Account. And that additional studies which may be required be dealt with on an individual basis as the process develops. I need a second here.
I'll second it.
So moved by me and seconded by Counselor Dilavol. Oh. I didn't do that. Do I need to sign?
Oh, yeah. Put your John Henry on it.
Seems normal.
Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to read it a second time. I'm just going to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, marking is carried. And the other thing I'm looking for is, and I'm so, this will save the clerk a lot of work. The other thing I'm looking for is if we have good consensus around the table, I think the staff would like to be able to give sort of advance warning to NOVATEC rather than waiting till the end of the month. So if we have consensus around the table that we're going to get, as you said, hung out on the council meeting. Okay. All right. So now I'm moving to item number seven on the agenda. Now, Mr. CIO, you want a short break here or?
Just, just one minute and I'll get the building inspector.
Okay. And Counselor Dilavol, would you pass this first, please?
Sure will.
So the chief building official is on his way into the room. And we're going to look at seven A on the agenda, which is the first quarter bylaw report. And you have that first quarter bylaw report in front of you, prepared by Mr. Buffett, the bylaw enforcement officer. Slightly different format than we've seen before. The clerk is working very closely with Mr. Buffett and I'm just going to ask ask her if she would just address herself to this report that we see in front of us. I think it does give us a fair good indication of effort here. So if you would, please.
Sure. Through the chair. Yes, we have been working very closely with our bylaw enforcement officer to input everything, literally every detail of every case into Citywide, which is new for him. So it is a learning curve. But we are working closely to have him input everything. There, there is some mishaps here and there, but it has been a very good process of learning for both of us to be able to track things and be able to produce new reports for council and committee to see. So within the first quarter, as you are well aware, in the fall, council passed a new updated waste collection and garbage policy. And within that, there was confusion within the community as to what applied and what didn't apply. So we've had our bylaw officer do a very aggressive public education campaign with different letters going out, client contact, notices, et cetera. We have received a lot of feedback from that, some good and bad because people are surprised. But people are getting the idea now that things have changed. Also, you can tell from previous years, our parking and winter parking violations have significantly decreased. Again, with our new policy in place and our bylaw officer providing more education, we think that is going in the right direction. And with this, we have alone in the first quarter, fifty-six new cases and twenty-six
And the ongoing ones are listed, I think, on page forty-one of ninety-six. And I think this gives you a, if you look at the, at the statistics as they're laid out there, you can see that relatively simple complaint does require a fair amount of effort. I mean, we're issuing work orders, we're making phone calls, we're following up phone calls with emails, emails with site visits, site visits with notices, notices with summons and summons with orders to comply. So that's the process that we have to go through in order to be successful if we end up in a courtroom with these folks. And it's always better to gain compliance as a result of an educational process than it is to end up in a courtroom because we're not getting any place in court anyway these days, right? Courts have been closed down for quite a number of months, weeks now. So is there any discussion about this report here? Okay. Yeah, well, kind of Deputy Mayor and then yourself. Go ahead.
By my calculations, between, I don't know, March the third and March the nineteenth, there are thirty-seven garbage policy issues in Cardinal or maybe thirty-six, whether one of them might be a Spencerville issue. I'm assuming that those were, so there's a work order generated for each one. A site, I'm assuming that's a site visit again for each one. And, and a notice left at all of those as well. Was there, I mean, during these site visits and a notice left, was there engagement with the resident or just a dropping of paperwork?
Through the chair. In certain cases, if the individual was there at home, I believe our bylaw officer did discuss it with them, with them. Other times, it was left on top of the garbage pile if there is sufficient place for it to be. Other options were in the mailbox or on the front door. It all depends on the scenario. I did instruct, once the provincial emergency declaration was declared, for him to wear proper PPE equipment.
So not necessarily a question, just more of a comment that, you know, during a global pandemic, a bylaw officer knocking on people's doors because somebody put their garbage out at five o'clock in the morning instead of six-thirty in the morning is a bit troublesome for, for me. You know, if, if hopefully judgment, we're not supposed to congregate, we're not supposed to see our family for Mother's Day, we're, we're not supposed to be doing things like that, but our bylaw officer can knock on doors and engage people because they put their garbage out too early is, is a little concerning to me until emergency orders are lifted.
Well, it looks like that activity stopped on the nineteenth of March, which was two days after the emergency order. If I'm, if I'm reading the thing correctly.
Through the chair, once the emergency order was declared, I did ask our bylaw officer to lessen up that activity. And there is ones here and there where it was reoccurring issues. So I did permit him to address the individual.
Okay. So I don't know whether that answers your question or not, but I mean, I think there's a certain sensitivity there.
More, yeah, more comment than that. It's good.
Okay.
Of those listed at under garbage on the report, five of them have gone to summons. So I guess the question is, like to get to that level, is there resistance on the part of the homeowner to compliant, compliance with the bylaw?
I'm sure that is correct.
And so we've gone through that process and of the, I think there's twenty-seven or twenty-nine. I didn't, I can't count there, but. So we've got five out of that total. Now, it'll go like goodness knows when that will be resolved, right? if there's those five, and most of them progressed right through to the point of a notice. So it wasn't, I don't know if the process was they talked to them and said, look, you know, you're putting it out too early. I think that's probably the main complaint, right? You're putting it out too early. And the guy said, oh, okay. Well, I'll make sure I don't do, do that again. And then, I mean, you wouldn't go to the notice level if, if that was the case. But, you know, these, there seems to be like, that is without a doubt the bulk of all of of the, that issue, there seems to be. So I don't know, maybe we need to revisit the bylaw and look at, well, what, what is, is that an unreasonable request? Or an unreasonable stipulation in the bylaw?
So is there a reason? Can you respond to the request by somebody went to summons?
So there, the five that are in summons, they're the ones that we've issued them multiple notices. And it was an ongoing concern that that person was not in compliance. And it's not the fact that the person is putting it out at five-thirty instead of seven o'clock in the morning. The whole purpose of the waste control bylaw that was changed by counselor, councils early in the year was because people were putting it out a day or day and a half before and it was not in a secure container and it was attracting wildlife that would rip it apart and other messes would occur. So people can still put it out at their curbside the night before or the next day, the day before, as long as it's within a secure container. So the majority of these site visits and notices which were sent out at the same time, he hands them the notice. It's an educational notice stating, this is the bylaw requirements now. Please come into compliance with those.
So does the bylaw, and I don't remember all the wording in it, and we know we reviewed it, but just refresh my memory, that the bylaw stipulates a secure container? It can be placed out earlier?
Correct. And if they do not, then that's where we ran into concerns within the village's.
Because if they just put it in a bag out, I mean, that won't fly.
Yeah, but in some of the cases, they're actually defying that. They're defying, after being told, they're actually defying it. Does that, yeah.
Okay, I'll continue on a little bit. So, so for five cases out of thirty-six, the compliance issue was that it was a day early and of those five cases, wildlife was getting in, into it?
I, I would have to review every single one of those five cases. I don't have each one of them open at this time to confirm whether or not that was the issue or if it was another issue within the bylaw.
Fair enough. And I'll continue if I can. So for the other thirty, am I safe in assuming that, that they were out, they were, their garbage was, was bagged in township bags and left on the curb, but it was just a little bit too early?
Through the chair, it may have been, he never goes out at five AM in the morning to check. He's out the night before checking. So it could have been the night before, it could have been the afternoon before. So it's almost a whole twenty-four hours before the time that it should be out.
And, and I'm going to tell you one thing, and this is just point of information. Since we passed the bylaw and since he's been doing that, my phone has stopped ringing. But I'll tell you, I was getting, one lady was calling me three times a day because next door, it was out like Tuesday for a Thursday collection. And it was by Tuesday evening, it was all over the street. And they didn't pick it up. They didn't. They didn't pick it up. Counselor Hunter, I know Counselor, uh, Deputy Mayor wants to follow up.
I mean, I, I knew when we passed this that, that there would be issues with, with the bylaw and that sort of thing. It just seems that we've got residents who are actually buying garbage bags, they're, they're doing their part. I, I don't know where these houses are, but, I mean, to me, the clean yards bylaw and the use of our bylaw enforcement for clean yards would be far more useful than, than targeting thirty-seven good people who have bought township garbage bags and put their garbage bag out early so that they don't have to keep it.
You weren't the guy getting the phone calls?
Well, my phone number's on the website too, so.
I've got to get Counselor Hunter in here.
Well, I see where, where Deputy Mayor's coming, coming from. I know that people get, get annoyed because they get, they, they figure they have the right that once they buy a township garbage bag, that all they have to do is set it in. I've been very surprised in, in our end of a township that I haven't got calls about it because I don't, I drive the roads. I try to get around them at least once every two, two to three weeks around them. And our garbage at the north end here is on Tuesdays, my section gets picked up. And I generally drive them on Sunday and I see lots of garbage turned on, on Sunday. People have put out, now, most of it is put out in a secure container, they're putting it out. Really, your garbage not picked up until Tuesday, you really don't need it out on Sunday afternoon, afternoon. You're still making garbage on Monday, so why not fill a bag and put it out on Monday night or Tuesday at the earliest? But I drive, drive around, around and I see garbage bags torn apart and garbage spread all over the road and places. And, and I wouldn't be surprised if people weren't calling, complaining about it. Although, a lot of it seems to get picked up, the people that, well, the coons have been into it or something again there and they pick it up and re-bag it. But it'd be a lot simpler if they just put it out on the day they're going to pick up and put it out in the container, like, you know, just, you just drive, drive the road off as you drive up it. And how many people do you see on that road that their garbage on a Tuesday is put out, it's not in a container?
Yeah.
Like, it seems to be in the country that people, outside of the villages, people seem to realize that if they put a bag out the night before, the coons or something is going to tear it all apart. So if they do have to put it out, they put it in a container. However, the people in the village just assume, well, it's in the village and there are no animals here that's going to tear it apart. But from some of the ratings I see, uh, that's not the case, it's getting tore apart.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Coons and scumps.
Yeah.
Coons and scumps.
The, the other interesting aspect to this though, is, I mean, I don't know, we don't have the data. There's only one in Spencerville and the rest of them are in Cardinal. Like, is, is there a survey being done on Spencerville as well? It seems to me to be unusual, unusually weighted to the Cardinal area, but hard to understand why.
Well, there was a section in Cardinal that was particularly bad.
Okay. The other thing, of course, is that the, 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 uh, work order was, they're created, I don't know, they seem, all the dates are twentieth of February, and then there's fifth of March, sixteenth of March. It's like, it's almost as though that was the day or the previous day that they went around and did the inspection. And, um, so there's clusters, if you use that term. Rather than on continuum.
Well, if you look though, you can see, like, obviously went around on the fifth of March and, and that's what he found.
Yeah, yeah, and of course.
He, he opened the work order for each one and then on the sixteenth was another. He doesn't, he doesn't go at five o'clock every morning.
The schedule is, uh, for one day a week, of course.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be why those dates are, but it's just that the preponderance of Cardinal seems to be.
It's a blitz. But, but, but again, you know, I mean, in a place like Spencerville, uh, where the folks may have learned many years ago, don't put it out early, the coons are going to get in it because it's a tighter little community, the edges are, are closer to the wildlife. Places like Cardinal where the, where the bad problems were, were not as close to the forest, if I can put it that way. And the scumps and the coons were actually living in, in close proximity to where the forest was being.
The other thing in my experience, because I didn't have a secure container for a number of years, was the crows and, uh,
Rings.
Yeah, birds, birds, basically. Um, so, I don't know, the answer is a, a secure container.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes, thank you, um, through, through you to the clerk. Um, I'm just, uh, I'm just curious about the five notices and the five offenses that we issued, I guess, tickets for. Were these people that actually had their garbage torn apart? Or were they just people that just haven't put it out the make before? Because I, I do concur with what the Deputy Mayor is, is concerned about. I think, my thought of education would be an education program, which he's obviously done, uh, to a point. But applying would be limited if the garbage had been torn apart. Not just for the sake of putting it out, uh, but that's not the way the bylaw reads and, and he's following the bylaw. But that's just, uh, yeah, I just, I, I'd just be interested in knowing whether the five that have been, have been issued tickets, um, actually had their garbage torn apart.
Through the chair, it's not so much whether those people had their garbage tore apart. Uh, in these specific cases, it was, our bylaw officer had already spoken with those individuals potentially even prior to this first quarter report. They did not gain compliance and continued to ignore the bylaw and the notice that he provided.
Yeah, and, and, and I kind of thought that was, that was probably the case. Um, and, and I know the one or two of those areas that really had never had an animal problem on that particular street. Not to say it's not going to happen, but at that particular point in time, there had never been an animal problem. But that's, that, that's my, that, that's just my concern.
Okay, any further discussion on this report? If not, I'm going to move on to the next report. See, we have the chief building official here. And, uh, so we'll go to, we'll go to seven B, uh, which is the first quarter twenty-twenty building report. And you have the report in front of you. And, uh, I'll open the floor for discussion. Comments, any? Counselor Hunter.
Well, I'd like to make one, one comment, and it's just to, uh, through the chairs or our chief building official, but, uh, I'm getting very good reviews from contractors and, and stuff in the area with the work he's doing. And, uh, I'd like to thank them for doing, coming on board with us and doing a great job because the contractors are, are really happy with our decision that we brought them on, on board because I share American Big, I had very few calls, I'm thinking about building.
That's, that's true. Are there comments, questions here for this report? I think, I think we have to take very good note of the fact that, uh, we've got, what is it, eight? First of all, in twenty nineteen, there were no new residential building permits in the first quarter. And here I think we're up to eleven for a total of eight residential units. Yes, eight residential units. Now, uh, just along that line, uh, over on the, I'll ask the, if you've got your report in front of you, Mr., uh, Mr. Crawford, on the far right column, it, uh, shows the value and it starts in February with eight twenty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, and then in March for three hundred thousand, but there's no number, it's all zeros all the way down there. But there is a total, I think, of eleven, is there not? Eleven building permits issued, including a single unit, a three-plex, a four-plex, for a total of eight residential units. But I see zeros there.
So through the, through the chair, I, I believe that's a manual entry and, uh, that, uh, didn't, didn't get, uh,
Okay, so that's just a, a manual entry.
It, it, it is because the, that, that total number down there relates to the, uh, second quarter total and the third quarter total. So, so previous, so. So that will, that, 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 that will be updated and corrected for the second, second.
All right. And, and did you want to say something, Mr. Crawford?
If I need to make a comment, just for clarification, uh, and it may, it may be confusing, but there's only three actual structures that are being built. But out of those three structures, you're getting eight units.
Yeah, right. Okay, so there's no more questions?
I, I have a comment or a question, just wondering, like, twenty-twenty to date, we have roughly, um, project value of one point six million. Right?
That's correct.
So my question is, like, typically, how long does it take before that figure gets blended into our assessment base?
Quite, quite a period of time. Quite a long period, because this is the issuance of building permits?
All right.
Then you have the construction.
Yeah, completion.
Yes, and then impact.
And so, so typically, if you're building a house, you're looking at about ninety days maybe, okay? Depending winter, summer, whatever. Uh, and so when we issue the occupancy, uh, certificate, then everything goes to MPAK and they can sit on it for a while?
Yes. And then we don't get it until we get a supplementary billing, supplementary notice, if I got that process correct. And a supplementary notice can lag the occupancy permit by ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, something.
If you look back at nineteen, there's eleven million dollars there of, uh, project.
Yep.
That basically helps our assessment base.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we can't be any more proactive than just sitting and waiting, is that it?
Unfortunately, once the file goes to MPAK, it's up to MPAK to go and do the assessed value.
How do we light a fire into them?
No. Just kidding. So I think the, the good news is, I mean, let's look at it from the good news here. The good news is, of course, that our construction values in, uh, twenty-twenty, the first quarter of twenty-twenty are leading where they were in, uh, twenty-nineteen. That's the good news. And, uh, I think that's to be celebrated. I wish there was a little bit more residential, I wish there was more commercial, I wish there was more industrial.
If we, when we get to the point we can issue building permits, there probably will be.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Okay, well, is there no further questions? I'm moving on then to seven C, which also can see, uh, involves the building department because what we're asked, uh, here is, uh, to, uh, look at changes to our fee structure. Uh, it's clear that, the mandate is clear, uh, the, uh, operation of the building department has to be financed by the fees that we collect. Now, if I recall, I did see a recommendation here. Uh, that committee recommends that council direct staff to schedule a public meeting as required under the Building Code Act later in twenty-twenty to review proposed changes to the building permit fee schedule and direct staff to prepare a revised building permit fee schedule in advance of the public meeting. So that's the recommendation that we're dealing with right now. Are there any questions with that specific recommendation?
Where were you reading that?
Uh, I'm reading it from the briefing note on page forty-seven of ninety-six and the top of page forty-eight. All right, Counselor Hunter.
I know when they want to look at different elements of it, but, uh, I'm reading all the background of it, of it, uh, I don't think we really can be looking at increasing our fees in our building permits. We're already higher than our neighbors on them, so. There might be some, uh, re-evaluation of some of other things that are built into the building, prevent by law here, but, uh, I don't think we need to be looking at increasing the square footage fees of these buildings, so. We can put high now on this.
Well, that's an interesting comment. Um, one of the things that I was looking for, and I can't remember, but I don't recall seeing it, um, and that is this, to what extent did we subsidize the department from the reserve fund in twenty-nineteen and in twenty-eighteen? Because it doesn't matter how you cut the cake, at some point, uh, we, we're going to have to raise these fees. We can't, we can't draw that reserve fund down to zero. So do we have an answer to that question? To what extent did we subsidize the department from the, uh, from the reserve fund in twenty-nineteen and twenty-eighteen? Do we know? I think it was in the briefing note someplace.
It is, it's on page forty-nine.
Page forty-nine?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the little page, just in two thousand and nineteen, there was so much construction, value such and such, the cost of labor, the services.
Okay, now, where does it say that we spent sixteen thousand out of the reserve fund?
I don't know if it does. The shortfall in both years was paid out of the reserve fund. It doesn't say the actual amount, but it says one two nine fifty for the cost and one eighteen eight six three eighteen.
And it doesn't say the balance in the reserve fund? No, but it says we did on reserve two eighteen and two nineteen, so we do have a problem.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have a problem. We got two years, we got two years where we subsidized the department from the reserve fund. Uh, but that's not, that, that's not given to us in this building, in this briefing note, I don't think. I can, I can't find it. No, but it says two eighteen and two nineteen, so.
So, so, so through the chair, tho, those exact numbers, no, they're, they're not included in this.
Okay, so, uh, I've got a, a recommendation in front of me, uh, and I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for that recommendation. And I think what I'm hearing is that we'd like to have a, a full and comprehensive report of, uh, of where, where we stand with regard to that reserve fund and the extent to which we are, uh, biting into that fund and what's the bounds of it. Now.
I would move, Mr.
Okay, so I've got a mover for the recommendation. Uh, so the mover is Counselor Cameron, and he's looking for a seconder. And I think before, we would be directing staff to schedule that public meeting and then we would be looking for another briefing note before that meeting happened. Looking for a seconder.
I'll second the motion because, uh, as I said, I, I don't think our, our square footage fees are out of line, but what I think is out of line is some of the fees that we're charging for individual charges. A long way is renewal of permits and transfers of, of permits and stuff. I think that's where we're, we're losing money on because it takes time to issue them and we're not recruiting our time on them, I think, I think that's.
So you're looking at page fifty-three?
That needs to be taken hard, look at it, so.
On page fifty-three?
Fifty-three and fifty-four, there is, you know, fees there for different transfers and, and. Fifty-three and fifty-four, there is, you know, fees there for different transfers and, and stuff. Other than some of the, some of the base fee charges.
There's twenty-one, twenty-one less.
I think are square footage charges, and most of them is, are above whatever townships are charging, but I don't think our, our base fees and transfer fees and stuff are, are in line with the length of time it takes to produce them, so.
Right. And one of the questions that, I'm just picking up on what you're saying, Councilor Hunter. One of the questions that I had, and that goes back to the time chart that, what we were provided with. And that chart is on page, it's actually table one on page fifty of ninety-six. So for example, it says, site plan review. For, for a residential permit, it's point two five of an hour, which is a quarter of an hour, which is fifteen minutes. So obviously, that does not include any travel time. And I'm wondering if those kinds of things are the kinds of things we shouldn't be looking at. So anyway, I have a motion on the floor, and I think staff has heard the discussion that we're looking for another report which would substantiate in a, in a comparative sort of way, why we're, why we're looking to change some of this fee schedule. So is there any further discussion on the actual recommendation? Uh, Mister Robertson wants in.
But I, it kind of begs the question how Augusta Township and the Towne Prescott and Sothdunness fees are significantly lower than, than this township.
Yeah, and that is a question that we can't answer though, can we?
True.
You know? Are they some, they're, they're under the same obligation as we are to finance their department from the fees that they collect. Do we, Mister Seau, have you had any discussions with them about that fact?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Is there been any further discussion with regard to efficiencies in the departments?
Uh, there, there, there has been, and we, currently, the, the three municipalities are, are looking at a, at a software, common software.
Okay, any, any chance of, are any further discussions around optimization of the, of the human resources?
Primarily, first step has been with respect to, to, to a common, a common software system.
Okay.
The question I would ask for the other townships is, you guys have got really lower rates than we have, what are you doing that's so great to keep those rates down? Because we, we don't know, maybe we're doing a better job than they are of constructing our expenses. You know, they, they may not be including things, who knows?
Okay, I see Mister Crawford is gonna, has got his hand up, so I'm gonna, did you want to address that, that particular issue?
If, if I could just make a couple comments. Uh, this is probably the first municipality I've ever had any experience with, actually has a reserve fund through the building department. Most, most municipalities that I am aware of are happy to get seventy, eighty percent of their fees out of the, to pay for the cost of running the department. So I have to congratulate this municipality for being able to build up a reserve account. But as far as municipalities are concerned, I can never, can never figure out how they can justify some of their permit fees, because, like you said, Augusta Township is very low. And yet, they seem to not have, not, not worry about how they manage in that department. Uh, then we come here, and I think we're doing it very efficiently. Contractors aren't complaining, and that's usually a good sign. And I know in the past where we have actually got council to reduce some fees, contractors didn't have, didn't really care, because they didn't see that as a major part of the cost of doing business, might say. So it is, it's, it's absolutely mysterious how different municipalities work.
Okay, so, so can I ask the CIO and the clerk the question then? I have the very distinct impression, because it's been repeated to me many times, that the, that the, that the department itself has to survive on its permit fees. Is that legislated someplace, or is it a regulation someplace? Are we the only ones that are following that?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that's specified in the code act, is it not, with respect to covering the cost?
If I could answer that. The building, the building act basically says that the municipality shall have a chief building official and necessary inspectors to enforce the building code. And it goes on to say that the municipality shall fund that, the cost of running that department out of the building permit fees. Now, the question is, how do you decide how they're gonna collect those fees? Large cities, they, they run on a surplus every year, because they have a lot more construction than we are gonna look at. Smaller municipalities will try, will struggle to try to get as maximum amount of fees they can to cover the cost, and it's up to council to decide whether or not they want to subsidize the rest out of the general revenue.
It's up to council?
Well, council passes the bylaw, they would collect the fees.
Yes, but are they breaching the act if they're not?
No, they're not. No.
If the building act says that it's, that the department shall be financed from its fees, shall is a pretty prescriptive word.
Yeah. But it's also, it's also, um, when you read that, the act with, act reads is that if you're running a, a major surplus, you shouldn't be doing it. So it's, it's not a, although it reads very, very strongly, it's not very well legislated to, to, to give you guidance, let's put it that way.
Okay, um.
Well, there's a, I think we've always skirted around is development fees too with it.
Yeah.
A lot of the townships fund part of their building department out of development fees for, I think North Grumble is something like twenty-two thousand dollar development fee on a lot, and they're talking about breasement.
Yes, but again, development fees are, are, are actually, I mean, development fees are required to be spent on infrastructure, you know, not, not your building department.
In, in regards to, I can't comment on Augusta Township, because I haven't, haven't dealt with them. We deal, we deal with Sothdunness quite a bit. And, and we have two farmers down there right now that have been, been waiting to get building permits to build major farms for three months. They filed their, all their information, and now they're making the, make the excuse that all their building department are, are working from home, they're not in the, not in the office. And, and they can't issue a, a building permit right now. Two of these farmers filed all their information, one man last week of December and the other one the first week of January. They're sitting on half million dollar and a million and a half dollar farm, sitting waiting to get a building permit to go, get the go-ahead that they can, can build, so we've never run into that.
No, we haven't.
Here, and to my information, I believe agricultural buildings, they can issue permits for the right now. If they're a sustainable business.
Agricultural permits are considered essential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They want.
Well, so are residential, are they not?
There's a, that's very confusing, because when you read the proclamations and the, and the way that you word them, you can allow for a underground structure to be built for residential uses, but you can't go above the ground. But you can put in a foundation and finish off what's going on the residential, so it's all over the place, so it's, I think it has everything to do with whether or not you can maintain distance separation at a, at a hygiene job site, so. But it, it is confusing to decide how you, how you interpret those, those rulings.
All right, well, allow the discussion to kind of get run rather broadly as it pertains to the recommendation that we have in front of us, but if we've exhausted the discussion, I would like to return to the recommendation. I have a mover and a seconder, it's a two-part recommendation. I think it's understood that we're looking for another briefing note to put this in the context of the reserve fund. Is there any further discussion before I call the question on the recommendation? No further discussion, those in favor of the recommendation?
I did a second, sir.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
I, 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 yeah, so I, okay, so it's carried. I had it moved by Councilor Cameron, seconded by Councilor Hunter. Okay, so now, I'm moving on to reserve and reserve fund transfers, and that's number seven D. Uh, and these are the water and sewer reserve fund transfers, so. And there is a recommendation here. Committee recommends that council approve the transfers to and from the reserve fund account, from the operating account for the water and wastewater funds in accordance with the table included herein. So I'd like to get that recommendation on the floor, do I have a mover and a seconder? I have Councilor Hunter moving, and I have Deputy Mayor DeShaw seconding. And we've got the table in front of us, are there any questions? So just a quick question from myself, on the Cardinal Water one. Ninety-eight, three-eight, one-one. And I guess my question there is, the last look that I had at the reserve funds, I think I saw that the Cardinal one was at five twelve, five seventy-one oh three. And I see in front of me it's five twenty-six, seven eighty-one nineteen, and I can't reconcile those two numbers. And the one that I'm looking at was received on January the tenth. I know it was an unaudited, it was pre-budget, but everything else reconciles right to the penny, except that one. Is there any, why am I wrong here on the five twelve?
Through the chair, without looking at the account and what's transpired, I, I can't explain the difference in comparison to what the January tenth schedule you had. I'd have to do some research to determine the.
My apologies too, I just got busy prior to the meeting, I meant to bring that to your attention prior to the meeting, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't get a minute. So let me just have a quick look here. That's for, it's only fourteen thousand difference, so we can get that, pick that up sometime again. So is there any, are there any other questions about this, these transfers? If not, I'm about to call the question on the recommendation. Hearing none, those in favor of the recommendation? Recommendation is carried. All right, now, the next issue on the table, or the next issue on the agenda, I guess, is the council remuneration report, seven E. So this is sort of the quarterly report, and you can see it in front of you. And you can also note, I hope, that the AMO conference in the amount of eight hundred and thirteen oh six for each council member has been included in your costs so far, so if you're not attending that virtual conference, get the, get the treasurer to back that money out.
I notified the court this morning on that.
Okay, Councilor Hunter?
I would draw from the queue, but I don't think it's worth that kind of money to virtually.
No, right. Okay, so it's up to each individual to notify the clerk, the, the treasurer to withdraw that, to take that, to back that out of there. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'm about to move on. And so I'm moving on now to the tax registration process, which is seven F. You've got the briefing note in front of you. It is a briefing note, there doesn't seem to be any recommendation associated with it. You can see how the process works. And I guess the disappointing thing here is that a lot of these deadlines have been extended, is that the gist of it? And do we have, have, has, has real tax been able to give us any kind of an indication? Is it, is it not, are these deadlines not going to be reinstituted with a certain time lag because of the pandemic declaration, or what, what are they saying?
So through the chair, once the emergency orders are lifted, real tax will start the process and send the, whatever letter is, is, and the notices is scheduled. So the next letter that we're supposed to be sending out would be the, the, the June fourth. Letters, which are the final notices, those will be sent out once the emergency orders have been lifted.
Oh, okay, so it's that June fourth deadline that's been extended?
Extended at this point.
Okay, Councilor Cameron?
Yes, uh, through, through you to, to the treasurer. Now, the item number eight on the, on the briefing note, after the tax account has been registered, a property owner can make a request to council. Now, is that request made, does that have to be made in person, or can that be made by, by correspondence?
No, that actually is made through staff, so it's, it's communicated to treasury, to the treasury department. Uh, I would bring a staff report to council or committee to get authorization to enter into an extension agreement with the individual. It, we've had a couple of instances recently where that, where that's been asked of council.
Good, thank, thank you for that. That's all, Mr. Mayor, I have.
Okay, all right, we just take that as information. And now I'm going to seven G, which is the five-year insurance broker summary. And I had asked for this, and I know there's a recommendation, but I'm not gonna call for a mover and a seconder on the recommendation at this meeting. I'm gonna postpone this a little bit, because I want to hear what the port general manager has to say at the port meeting. And I'm gonna tell you that ordinarily wouldn't be involved in this, but the port premium came in considerably above what was in the budget, the port budget. And I was asked by the port manager to attend a meeting after the renewal date. And so I just want to go through that discussion with council or with the port management committee before we, before we deal with this recommendation. So if there's any questions with the briefing note, we'll bring them up now. But I would like to see this briefing note come back, probably just at the council meeting at the end of the month. Mister Bradley?
Yes, Mister Mayor, thank you. The year twenty twenty is two hundred and seventy thousand premium, is that just, does that include the port?
No.
Okay. That was my question, too.
Yeah. And the ports is, you know, there's considerable. Now, I did see an email from Mister Delly this morning, giving his premiums for five years, but it didn't get to this briefing note, right?
Uh, that, that is correct, that was just received this morning.
Yes, right, so that was the reason that I wanted to hold this to the port meeting, go ahead.
Yes, just a, a question through you to the, to the treasurer again. It's just regarding the two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen cyber insurance premium, almost doubled. Did we get a, a reason for that?
Through the chair, the doubling isn't necessarily an annual, the twenty nineteen, we didn't purchase the cyber insurance until later on in the year. So that's a prorated premium for, for a period of, of the time.
Partial year.
Partial year, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mister.
Okay, any further discussion here? Okay, I'm going then to seven B, which is the municipal act, section three fifty-seven, tax collection. And so, again, there's no briefing note, but just indicating, this whole section deals with reduction and refund of taxes, cancellation, reduction and refund of taxes. And as you can see from the briefing note, there's basically eight reasons, only eight reasons, for a cancellation, a reduction, or a refund of taxes. Now, the briefing note, as it, as it indicates on the top of page sixty-four, typically, the majority of those applications are the result of a fire or a demolition, or a change to exempt. And those are three of the reasons, but there are. But there are other reasons, for example, as indicated on the first page. Reason number E, applicant is unable to pay taxes because of sickness or extreme poverty. And item number G, a gross or manifest error occurred that is not related to the value of assessment. And number H, repairs or renovations presented, prevented the normal use of the land. So those cases, taxes can be refunded, but there's a different process, as I understand it. Can you just speak to that process?
No, there's not really a different process. Through the chair, the applicant still makes, makes application to the treasurer. The building department, if they are required to, to provide some more information, or the tax department fills in the top of the application and submits it to MPAC, and they provide us with a reevaluation of the assessment. And then it's provided back to the township for, for refund if, if it is applicable. So there really is no difference. The applicant unable to pay taxes, sickness and poverty, that tends to go through a little bit through the United Counties because, because the taxes are not just municipal taxes, it's the county level as well. The county does help the townships with determination of that because they have the social services department in, at the county level to determine, you know, those, those aspects of extreme poverty.
Now, somewhere in section three thirty-six, three fifty-seven, there's a reference to the decision coming to council. And council, honored before September thirtieth of the year, following the year in respect of which the application, the council shall hold a meeting at which the applicants make representations to council, notify the applicants of the meeting by mail, send it these fourteen days before the meeting, and then make its decision. So that would apply in the cases of sickness or extreme poverty, would it not?
I would, I would assume yes, because those are extenuating circumstances.
Right. Okay, so are there any other questions here with regard to this? So hearing none, I'm about to move on then. And just want to make sure where I am here. Just allow me one minute, please.
Sixty-five of ninety-six.
Item I, yeah, sixty-five of ninety-six. Thank you very much. So this is a little progress report on where we are here. Total grant remaining as of the end of project three was five-twenty-eight. And so that's, again, for information. Deputy Mayor?
Question on that, that page through the chair, to CAO or to treasurer, in regard to the service delivery review, have we, have we issued a final payment for that, and have we received a final copy?
So through, through, through the chair, we have not issued a final payment, and we received a final copy yesterday morning. An email came with a final copy. So staff has not had an opportunity to, to look at that.
So quoted in here the cost of fifty, fifty-eight, is that holding back? Is that what we've paid so far, and are we holding back money that we still owe? Or is that an indication of what, what is that number?
Through the chair, that fifty-eight thousand is the actual funds that have been processed through accounts payable and, like, actually given to the consultant. There is one check that was cut, which is not included in this value, that is being retained at the moment.
Okay, so this is, the fifty-eight is actually been cashed owed and the check's cashed?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So... I can't remember the number offhand, but is there an indication of how much more there will be coming out of that account now?
The original, through the chair, the original tender was around sixty-one thousand.
Sixty-one.
So I think the check is around thirty-one or thirty-two hundred.
Okay.
Oh, the outstanding check that we're holding, thirty-one, huh?
It's not, yeah, it's not one percent.
Okay. Go ahead.
One last one, sorry, sorry, Counselor Dillaw. Uh, to the CAO, so staff hasn't had a chance to look at the final report. When can council expect to get a, a copy of that final report in her hands?
The hope would be, if all goes well, to get that in on the Public Works and Fire Mail Services going next two steps.
Nice.
That was one of my questions, and are we expecting anything new on that? We don't know yet for this one, sure.
Yes, through, through, through the chair.
Maybe something new.
Okay, so hanging tough right now, but coming on, no, next meeting?
Yes, we'll, we'll come next, at next week's meeting.
Yes, Counselor Cameron? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking at the interest payments. There's two of them shown, one for nine thousand, three...
Not payments?
Not payments, no.
I think they would be revenue into the fund.
Into, into, yeah, not payments. Payment stocks, I guess. Anyway, the interest, is that, is that paid or given out monthly?
Yes, through the chair, this is, the modernization money was put in consolidated reserve of fund, fund account, and so monthly, the bank provides us with interest, and it's allocated to each section of the reserve.
Okay, and it says in, at the, at the last one, the three thou, four thousand dollar one, it said two April, so we still have April coming in?
No, that includes up to April.
Okay.
So this is the most current amount that I have, I haven't got.
Thank you.
But that's twelve thousand, actually nine, nine and four, thirteen thousand of interest.
Yeah.
Okay, so no further questions, I'm moving on to item number J, which is the IT progress report. And I must say, just a quick comment, I'm really impressed with the degree that they're evaluating us here. Did we actually score ninety-one percent?
That's the summary score.
That's the summary score, yeah. Does staff want to speak to this? There, there doesn't seem, I, I didn't see a recommendation anyplace. I just saw the, a briefing note, the staff acknowledges there are still a few areas that require refinement, disaster recovery plan has to be updated, and the group policy, account and session lockout, what does, I'm not sure what that means.
So thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah. It's just, it's a matter of a number of attempts to, to log in before, before it sort of shuts down. And if, if the, if computers are unattended for, for X amount of time, that they'll, they'll automatically go into sort of lockdown mode.
Right. But otherwise, ninety-one percent, unless somebody has a comment. No? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
This is to you, Mr. CEO. Are we taking any, any incentives, how to fix this, like our workstations, where files not saved locally and do not use stored files? Like, are we, this would be changing processes users?
So through, so through the chair, we're certainly working on some of those items?
Right.
And I think some, some of this probably isn't a discussion for, for public.
I'm sorry?
I said some, some, some of that detail isn't for public.
Okay, I'm just concerned, too, about the, the group policy, the locked screen probably was my biggest concern, and it didn't say any recommendations, but we are working on it?
Yes, we've already made contact with, with OnServe, and we'll tighten that up.
Thank you so much. Okay, no further questions? I'm going to move on to item number K, township vote launch. Again, there's a briefing note here, and I don't see a recommendation, discussion, questions. Hearing none, I'm about to move on again. Okay, and so then I'm at item number eight on the agenda, which is council inquiry or notice of motion. Does anybody have anything to bring forward here?
I don't have anything to bring forward, but I, I just wanted to indicate it was part of the discussion before about, you know, pushing back the, the job site challenge and extending out that date. And this is sort of an, I'll just share with, and I have maybe with a couple of the counselors, but just an interesting and, and sort of a great opportunity for myself as a, as a council member and a business, a small business owner. But I've been approached by the MPP's office and, and have been added to the subcommittee under Prabhat Me, Minister Prabhat Me Sikaria, for the jobs and recovery and reopening subcommittee. So we'll be having our second meeting tomorrow as we make recommendations for the opening of, and reopening of businesses across Ontario. So it's kind of a, for me, helping out with my industry. It's an interesting, interesting proposition, and it's a great way to network and, and work alongside Minister Sikaria.
Well, that's good to know, and, and although your interest is different than my interest, because your interest is behind the chair and my interest is in the chair. How long's that?
That's tomorrow's discussion, and...
Hurry, hurry.
But it's, it's looking at, if everything goes well, I mean, I'll know a bit more tomorrow, but I, you know, at least three and, and possibly up to as many as eight. But we're, we're really trending in, in the right direction. I think today's numbers are around three hundred and eight, new, which they said we'd be fully backed by the time we get to two hundred, and we're, we're dropping great right now, so hopefully that'll mean we can get back, get back to business and, and not have that balancing act to continue.
Yes, now, the CAO, CAO did put a sheet on your desk, and that sheet represents the provincial numbers, does it not?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
So any other council inquiries or notices of motion here? Counselor Dillaw?
I have a couple here. I seen on the, on our, the one particular, a substrate property that we had, what's the status on that?
So through, through the chair, hopefully I can provide you an update at the Public Works, Environmental Services.
Thank you. And now that the docks are going ahead, or they look like the new ones are approaching, I was a little, I was probably a little upset about their cost until I looked at them, and I have to give, Mr. Spencer, they're well, well-made and well-worth every nickel, I think. They're good, though. They're excellent-looking docks. I'm hoping we can take the old wood, the old docks are there, though, and bring them up and install them in front of the pavilion, the old ones that are there. So I just want to put that out there.
Is that our plan?
Through, through, through the chair, not, not at this time. There, there is a, there is a new dock going in at the, at the canteen, but that was, that was the extent. I think some of the old docks are going to be used to fix up some of our picnic tables.
Fix up our what?
Some of the picnic tables, I believe, mistaken?
Yes, we're planning to use some of the lumber off the docks to repair some of our ancient picnic tables.
Why, when they're good docks, we could put them up in front of the pavilion there for people to tie up their boats? Why would we tear them apart? Please help me.
The lumber on the docks are in good shape. It's the undercarriage that is not in good shape.
Undercarriage is, is, is a forty-five-gallon plastic drum. I'll get you all kinds of undercarriages if you want.
So through, through, through the chair, I guess the council inquiry or notice of motion is, you'd like a report with the, with respect to the use of the old docks?
Well, I, I think, I think that's the gist of the questioning that I'm hearing, and I, I'll speak for myself. I know I share the same concerns as, as Counselor Dillaw is expressing right now, because one of the things that is constantly brought up to me, especially when that little shop is open up in the evening, is that the people don't have room to park their boats to go get ice cream. And I, I thought, I thought that our plan was to bring those, just the floating ones, not the, not the ones that are fastened to the shore, but the ones that are fully floating, bring them up and set them alongside, if I can put it that way, in front of the canteen. So I think we would like to see a report on that before we start demolishing them. Am I getting a, shaking a nodding of heads there, that we'd like to see a report on that? Yeah?
Well, perhaps, perhaps we can clear up some of the confusion for me, because I thought we had put pilings in around the, around the canteen area last fall, specifically for those docks to be, that was my impression, that those were put in. But that, but we're going to get a new one in there, you say?
Yes, as part of the thirty thousand dollars for the docks this year, a new dock is being constructed, and will be put there in front of the canteen.
Okay.
So there is, there will be a dock there.
Yeah, but again, twenty-four-foot boat, you need. I, I would like a report to see if we can't do something in front of the pavilion there. There's steps and everything going down there. Counselor Hunter?
Well, and there, facility manager said, we've got a new dock coming. There's going to be a dock there.
It's at the canteen?
At the canteen, yeah.
That's right. By the legion where the pavilion is, quite further, and we still have the old docks there that aren't doing either.
How many docks do we need down there? You have a dock there, there from tying the boat up, up to the canteen.
One boat.
One boat.
I've never been down there that I've seen that, that many boats, and you need a whole bunch of docks there to come to the canteen if there's four or five people at that canteen.
You're hiring when there's no docks, Mr. Counselor? That's, that's the common complaint. There's a boat there, so I just turn around a left. If you, if you bring docks there, you'll bring boats there, sir. You bring, you'll bring people there, believe me.
I don't think we need docks that close together. They got docks right down, down at the end. Is they really that bad to tie their boat up and lock up?
Well, Counselor Cameron, you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at one time, further between the legion and the pavilion, or close, close in that area, there used to be a, a landing area there and stairs coming up, but because of the narrowness of the road right there, it became very, very unsafe. Kids were running up the stairs and right across the road, and there was, there was a couple of near misses with, with vehicles. So we have to be, if, if we're going to move, if we're going to move into the area you're suggesting, the pavilion area, we have to be very, very careful that the, the safety, the safety of the people using both the pavilion and the, and the docks are carefully monitored or, and taken into consideration. Of course, I would like to see docks in the canteen area, you know, one or two of the old ones connected to the new one that's going in, perhaps. I would like to see that, but, but a report would be nice.
Okay, well, we've asked for a report, and I think we have a consensus here that we're not going to be able to. Are there any other inquiries or notices of motion to bring forward here?
I have one, we're still on the dock process. The, when, through the chair, or facility manager, when the docks, new docks are going in, I assume they're, like, they're working on the day down, down there, the ramp going, going down, one complaint I've heard a lot is the, the ramps got dug out at the end of the cement, and cement's got bad, the trucks back in, the back ramping, and then they get spinning on the ramp trying to come out because there's a drop-off. Trailers drop off. Is that going to be filled in or a little work done on the ramp itself?
Through the chair, to Counselor Cameron, or we can, or Counselor Hunter, we can certainly look at that. There hasn't been anyone that's brought that to, to staff's attention.
attention other than yourselves here today.
Yeah, I know in the past, we've put some gravel in.
We have in the past added gravel at various times when there's been a problem. So I wasn't aware that there was a problem this year. So we have, we have not done anything.
Oh, I think what happens when the water gets lower, the boats have to back up further and they drop off the edge of the concrete. I know it's been brought to my attention, but it doesn't need gravel, it needs heavy ballast. And the drop off the edge of the concrete is not like three or four inches, it's like a foot.
I think what the suggestion, I suggested that if we're going to spend money on modernizing the arc down there, that would be something to be considered in the committee on extending the cement of the ramp down there to make it safer, so.
Yeah, it was, Mr. Hunter. Okay, so there's a number of issues that are brought up there under council inquiries or notices of motion. Is there anyone else to bring anything forward? Okay, I'll just go quickly to the mayor's report. Just to indicate that the county emergency control group meeting was held this morning. Now, this was meeting number seven. And I just want to say that at the county level, they're looking forward to getting back to work. So we've asked them for a plan to bring those people that are working from home back into the office, and a number of other processes that we've put in place. Do people going someplace have to have two separate vehicles? You know, how much longer is that going to continue? And so at the county level at least, we're looking at ways to end the county declaration of emergency. And I would think that that will probably end long before the provincial emergency ends. And the other issue that I'm going to bring up, because I'm getting so many phone calls about it, and, well, there's actually two. And one is the issue of the bunkies, as they call them, or the rental, little rental units on Tuttle Point Road. And I've asked the chief building official, the C A O, to look into it. But there are a number of those, what we would normally call mennonite sheds, ten by twelves or ten by twenty fours or twelve by twenty fours, that have been set up along Tuttle Point Road that are obviously being used as rental overnights. And I don't know who's renting them, but it's been brought to my attention that they're being advertised on R B and B. And, you know, I'm getting a lot of complaints from Tuttle Point Road about visitors on the road not respecting the fact that that's private property. And I've been asked, would the township mail out a letter to the residents of Tuttle Point Road, pointing out to the residents that it is private property, they're all, it's private property owned by them all, each individual one as they go past? And would we mail out this letter asking everyone to observe and respect the fact that they're on private property? So that letter hasn't come to me yet, so I'm just broaching the issue here now. The other issue that I'm broaching is that on River View Crescent in New Wexford, at a meeting with staff just before this meeting, as a result of two emails that I've had from people in New Wexford of a commercial development proposing to take place in New Wexford. And I'm raising it as an issue because it will come forward at the CDC meeting, since the applicant has applied for a site plan agreement. And just raising it so that if you hear complaints, you're at least aware of it. And I think you will, because I've advised the homeowners that own homes on River View Crescent, that they should be directing letters to the mayors and count, to the mayor and council if they have concerns. And I know that they do. So that concludes my report. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail beyond that, other than to speak to what Deputy Mayor Deschamps was speaking about. And I just want to go through the, just review quickly the little report that you got in front of you, which shows that on May the third, there were four hundred, four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two confirmed positive cases in the province. The next day, it increased by fifty-two. Sorry, it didn't, sorry, I've got to get this right now. Let me get it right. On, anyway, the number goes something like this. Down by two hundred and fourteen, up by fifty-two, down by ninety-nine, up by four, down by seven, down by one oh six, and today, down by a hundred and thirty-eight. So those are roughly how it's trending in the province. And I just want to get down by one thirty-eight, it's a helpful sign. So that's the mayor's report. And I'm going on now to the next item on the agenda, which is the question period. Then open to the floor. Press first.
Just two. On page forty-nine of sixty-eight, under May twenty twenty, your first paragraph, at the very end of that, it says, in addition over the last five years, we have seen significant industrial growth. And I just wondered if you could give me a few examples of that industrial growth.
So where are we looking here?
Forty-nine, page forty-nine?
Yes.
The first long paragraph?
Yes.
Starts the township of. At the last sentence says, in addition, over the last five years, we have seen significant industrial growth.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if you could give me a couple of clarified examples to go on with that.
Well, first was Giant Tiger, a hundred and sixty million.
Okay.
And then we were getting, you know, I had some big numbers from Jones Rail Yard, which is around total, I guess it's going to be twenty million. And as well, we were getting some pretty big investments at Ingredient and Cardinal, I think up around five million. And I was getting as well at Greenfield, yeah, Greenfield Ethanol, I was getting a summer of about two to three, four million projects there. And as well, in that five year period, we had the expansion at the port, the new grain bin, which is around two million, maybe three, I think. And although it hasn't actually been cash flowed yet, the spout project, which is going to be roughly thirteen million. So there's, I think that's what this paragraph is referring to.
Okay, thank you. I was going to go on and ask some of those numbers, but you already provided them. The second one is just more curiosity than anything. Page thirteen, where you spoke about the community grants. When you support a group like the A T D Club, do you have any discretion to designate how that, what they do with that money?
Well, they apply to us to use that money for, vest for their trail wardens.
Right.
So we take them at their word.
Okay.
Now, the other thing is, they can't apply until next year.
Right.
They can't apply next year until they report to us how they spent that money.
Okay. Thank you. That was their comment.
Okay, now, we do have a closed session, which will begin in about five minutes. And I would like to, do I need the motion to go into the closed session? I think I do. Who has the motion to go into the closed session? Councillor Hunter?
With my sounds, Deputy Mayor Deschamps, committee of the whole proceeding, the closed session, three thirty, eight p.m., in order to address matters pertaining to personnel matters, identifying any visual activity, minister, local board and police, respectively, C A O, performance evaluation, minutes of closed session dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you very much. Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, and then we'll have a five-minute break, please.
Council resumes at four fifty-five, p.m.
Oh, we're carried.
Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. We've now ended the in-camera session, and I'm going to report out from the in-camera session. So the first thing, the council had a long discussion with the C A O concerning various issues and aspects of his position going forward. And then the second thing, reporting out from the closed session, was the, will be the approval of the in-camera session that was held on April thirteenth. Councillor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Dillaw. The committee of the whole approves the closed session minutes dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, and then the confirmatory bylaw. Anybody about a confirmatory bylaw?
Do we do it at the committee level?
Maybe we don't. Well, yeah, that's right, we don't have it. Because we didn't have any bylaws. So that leads to adjournment.
That would be me, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor John Hunter, that the committee of the whole now does adjourn at five fifty-eight. It's four fifty-eight.
Four fifty-eight.
I need our statement, other date already.
Overtime. I'm on the clock now.
Thank you very much.
Those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion is carried.